It is five o'clock. The July 10th meeting of the Sherwood Planning Commission will come to order. Please call the roll.
Yalom.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Middleton.
Here.
Bruno.
Here.
Have you reviewed the minutes? Have you seen them?
I haven't seen them.
No minutes.
No minutes.
Well, we won't approve those today.
Nope. Leave that for next time.
Moving on to agenda item number four.
Ordinance number 2183 regarding accessory structures.
Yes. Any wish to come up with?
I didn't copy the handout from last question. I see it's very.
Thank you, sir.
Just to revisit the discussion of what I believe were some unintended consequences resulting in the language that we ended up with when we adopted our last version of the accessory structure ordinance. Just to reiterate, I think we were, you know, real diligent to make sure if we allowed the larger buildings that they had an increased setback, but... Y'all want to just go over this again or just to revisit it or... Okay. I'm just going to kind of go down this sheet. I feel like the unintended, two unintended consequences that we have, if you look at a number one there, that even small buildings placed on acreage require an increased setback because now when they have acreage, one acre or more, we require that the setback be 10% of the lot width up to 25 foot because we were wanting to make sure if they build a, you know, a big building, a 3,000 square foot building, that they weren't setting it real close to the property line. But what we didn't think about is, well, what if they're just wanting to build a 10-foot garden shed? You know, we're still requiring this real big setback and that's, that causes a problem. You know, some of these properties are, you know, people wanting to build just a small building and their house is like at the front of their property, close to the road. And even though they have the acreage, it's mostly behind them and they really kind of want the, you know, either garage, they want it close to the driveway or a garden shed or whatever. So I'm recommending we make an adjustment there. What I put here, that any building up to 200 feet and having up to a 10-foot sidewall height be allowed to be placed, having the reduced setbacks of four foot from the side of the property line, just like we do in town. And that taller buildings, 17-foot sidewall height, you know, that's the tallest they can go with 17 foot when you have, when you, when you, once you reach the half acre mark, you can go up to 17-foot sidewall height. So anything over 10-foot high, 17-foot that are allowed in that situation, that we require a minimum setback of eight foot, you know, and once they get, once we get to an acre, we'll just use, you know, use what we got, the 10%.
Right.
And then I've got some current language there. That's what our ordinance says. Those are the two sections of our current ordinance that we're talking about. And I have some recommended new language there to make those corrections.
On item 10.1.7, it doesn't reference any building size. The one before it says up to 200, the one after it says over 200. What about this one?
Well, my feeling was is that in any case, if it has a sidewall height over 10-foot, they should have an increased setback.
Regardless of size.
Regardless of size. Now, our storage building ordinance, the full draft of our existing ordinance is on the second page here. And you're not allowed anything over 10-foot height until you get into the half acre or more lot. So that's where that even starts to apply into.
I really only have one concern about this language, and that is that there are side yard requirements for accessory buildings built into R1, R2, R3, and R4, I think, zones. And to some extent, I'm concerned about whether these would conflict with the requirements in those sections and whether any other language is needed to make sure that it doesn't.
I've got a zoning... Maybe I didn't bring it. I was going to say we could visit that right now. We can look at that and see if, somebody got a zoning book on them?
He did.
Why are we going to mess up this computer? I just want to take a quick look at something. Mine. You know, we list accessory structures, like for example, in description of residential zoning districts under R1, we list the accessory structures under accessory uses. And then under the... Okay, under the side yard, it says there shall be a side yard setback on each side of the building, having a width not less than 10% of the average lot width up to a maximum of eight feet for interior lots. And then it says excluding accessory buildings, which shall be a minimum of four feet from the side property line. Okay? That's what you're talking about.
Right.
Okay. I would say we probably need to, need to address that in these different sections of our book. It's true.
And we already, we already did when we adopted this ordinance. Right.
But it's a good point and it's something we probably need to go back and look at.
Yeah, it may be no more than in each section that says unless section 10.1.6 applies, something that cross-references and doesn't create a conflict.
You know, I'm looking, I think, more than anything else right now for a consensus from the panel here if we want to make these changes. If so, me and James can get together and maybe work on the language and then bring it back in some kind of, maybe in a...
Have you had issues with the, with this? I guess that's what brought this is on, so I mean...
It's ironic, but this way, we had a call from a citizen because we got a situation where somebody had like 0.6 acres and they're building to the square footage of the acreage, you know, the lot instead of the homes of their building, like, you know, it's about a thousand square foot building and they're putting it four foot from the property line. We actually got a call from an neighbor saying they think they missed their setbacks. They knew something about it, you know, and I went and checked it and it was fine. And I called them and I said, no, they're, they're good. Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure everything was copacetic, but, you know, it was a situation where, you know, you build a thousand-foot building and you put it four foot from the line, it, it has that looming effect that we were, we were trying to avoid. And I had another case, you know, and I didn't bring it with me, but I did have another case where a guy was wanting to build a small building. And it wasn't any problem for him to move it, but, you know, he, he called me and just how ridiculous that sounded that we were telling him he had to, you know, move a 20-foot inside his property line. It was a real small building. I just, you know, it just felt ridiculous. I agree. Which is something we didn't think of.
Yeah, I, I agree with you that that wasn't the intention, so I'm in favor of letting them go revisit and, you know...
If y'all are just, you know, give me a consensus on the intent on both these items and we can work on the language and bring it back.
In both the cases you described, yeah, I think that wasn't the intention. It was the intention to get the bigger ones away from the property line and not...
No, ultimately, my understanding, no matter what we do, it's got to go to the council. And I know that like on the paved driveway ordinance, we made a decision to kind of fold that in when we did the changes and we might do that here too.
Well, this will require a public hearing.
Right.
So is there any commissioner who is opposed to considering this?
No.
And I would suggest that we hope that you bring a formal recommendation to us next meeting.
We'll do a hard looking next time.
I think all these three recommendations down here, I agree with them completely.
Yes.
Like I said, the only thing I'm concerned about is making sure that cross-referencing doesn't create conflict.
Yes, yes.
That takes care of the agenda. Moving on to old business, the planned unit development revisions.
Yes, I'll start out by asking if there's anybody that has any burning questions or comments that they were needing to look at or get addressed.
Does it have to be burning?
It doesn't have to be burning. It could be, it could be a slight itch.
On 14.0802 on minimum size, I'm just curious as to, and you might have said this before, as to why the minimum size for commercial or industrial is one acre and for residential or mixed use is three.
It has been my experience that the areas where you have some level of abuse of the PUD has been on the residential side by essentially wanting to take a one-acre site and squeeze several duplexes in or squeeze some type of multifamily that, that maybe isn't necessarily appropriate. It, it seems to be that there's more neighborhood concern about using residential or mixed use on, in that sort of smaller infill type of setting, but less concern about when it is a commercial or industrial. That, that's the reason behind this.
What sorts of projects might you expect to see on a one-acre site in an industrial or commercial?
Um, you're talking about some, some kind of infill and office use or something along those lines that, that you might have, not necessarily, nothing that would require any kind of large-scale siding.
My other question was that in 140803, it's not so much a question, is that I would want to make sure that if they were trying to do something that was consistent with the plan, but it wasn't, that there ought to be language in here that says the plan has to be amended before we can do that.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I would, I mean, I kind of think it maybe in somewhat, you're saying if it, if out of these three, it meets one of them, but it doesn't meet the plan, that we would still require the plan to be revised?
It, I guess it depends on what the plans ultimately going to look like, but wouldn't the plan want to reflect even a planned unit development?
I mean, one thing that I have put in a lot of zoning codes is a, is a requirement for conformance to the land. It basically says that any, any rezoning must conform to the land.
Because we've been pushing that quite a bit lately.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I have no opposition to that being included, but I would, honestly, I would like to see it included as a general, a general requirement.
On item D, on your comments, you responded that 36 or 48 dwelling units per acre would be perfectly acceptable. I guess you don't have any preference?
Not really. I mean, once you get to that, that level of density, you don't saw this great difference.
36 dwelling units per acre?
Yeah, let's, let's go inverted.
Okay.
Yeah, what, what, what that is intended is that that is some form of mixed use. So that's only, it's essentially providing a density bonus if you're going to incorporate a mixed-use development, that then you can increase the density. So if you have a, like, say a ground floor commercial, that means that you can have a couple floors, three, potentially up to four floors, four-story structure as, as residential building. And in a normal multifamily, it's caps out of it.
There were several things in here where the city attorney needed to weigh in. Have you got any comments?
We've communicated about those. Yeah, essentially, there was a, one of the city council members had a, a question about the structures of different things being set up and if, if, who would end up holding liability, whether it was a homeowners association or an improvement district. An improvement district, I mean, if it defaults, it's going to depend on what the structure is, but I think inevitably it's, it's going to fall back either on that, that private entity or the improvement district and not the city.
Gentlemen, do you have a question or a concern or a comment? I'll say all along, the only thing I have been concerned about, and I just need a comfort level on this, is that we cannot use the planned unit development as a way to wire around the underlying zoning standards. And I want to be sure, I want to be comfortable that the language we've got here provides us enough basis to preclude that from happening.
So based on that concern, in, if you look in 1408.05, which will be on the screen, to approve a PUD zoning plan, the planning commission shall find the following. And we've got item A through E, which aren't normal, which have already been there. And then I made in addition, the developments assigned and intent is consistent with the purpose of the PD regulations, detailed in section 14.08.1, which if you go back to the beginning, sorry, standing back up to the top, with the purpose and intent of this, purposes of the planning of the district is to promote flexibility and innovation in design of small and large-scale developments while encouraging the simultaneous development of multiple amenities beneficial to both the users of the development and the city as a whole. Planning developments also are used to create innovative development of vacant infill parcels, built-up areas of the state, incorporation of open spaces.
And if I recollect, that's in response to a question or an issue raised by Councilman Harmon.
That is.
And you had one other comment in here relating to, is, but this draft contains a response to all those questions?
It does, yeah. And essentially, where it says, see, see the memo to Alderman Harmon, essentially what that was, it's incorporated, it's been addressed. If it was a concern over... It was a concern over council action, requiring that the council act on something within a certain number of days, but you see there's such city council decisions shall occur within 30 days.
And to clarify, that on the draft that we have here, anything that's underlined is new language, anything that's a strike through has been deleted.
Correct.
Which is, and the council specifically wanted to see it in that format. Or do you wish to study it some more?
No, I think we'll make a motion to accept and move it on.
It's motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Yalom.
Uh, aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
On the heels of that, um, there had been a lot of discussion, well, let's go into, the next thing is the digital zoning code. It is on the city's webpage. You all had a chance to look at a copy. If I gave you a test today, I'm sure you would all pass it with line colors. There are two changes that have been made to that draft that's on the city webpage. The first is that I discovered quite by accident that Sherwood has overlay district. And that overlay district is the air safety zones, which Lucian mentioned to us back last year. That was passed by an ordinance back in 2007, I believe. The reason I didn't see it is it's listed in the municipal code under subdivision regulations, when in fact it is a zoning. Our zoning map does not currently show that. The zoning text does not currently have it in there, so that needs to at some point be added, but it's a complicated issue and that's not going, I don't want it to hold up our ability to get the zoning code established. So what I have done is inserted a dummy section in there for overlay districts with just a general statement of purpose. And we will address the issue with, and we'll get the Air Force Base to help us out with that because it clearly, and now there is a state law that not only authorizes and encourages us to adopt that zoning overlay district, it mandates it. But it's more complicated than that because, and I'll go ahead and say it, up until, in 2013, the legislature passed a bill that said the territorial planning jurisdiction of the, the city is one mile. And we can have a planning area within that one mile. And within that one mile, we can exercise subdivision regulations, but we cannot exercise zoning. And so you got a, a picture?
Acres? I don't. Was I supposed to bring that one?
Yep.
Sorry. That's the zoning maps.
Did you get the three examples?
Yes.
It's the third example. We have plotted this on our zoning code and that's, there are two zones. And the first one has fairly significant land use requirements and the second one is less intensive. And that's the area basically that they cover inside Sherwood. The 2013 ordinance law at the state said we can't zone outside the city. And what this clearly requires is zoning. The last session of the General Assembly passed a law that says cities of the first class shall exercise that responsibility and ensure compliance with that for a distance of up to five miles, which means they say we're to zone outside the city and it's obligatory. But there's another part of that that says we can't do it. So we, we need a legal understanding about what it is we can do because I don't want us to be in a position of complying with one law and violating another. So until we get a better sense of that, our city attorney is working on that, until we get a better sense of that, I don't propose to include overlay districts in our zoning code for adoption right away. We still have an ordinance on the books, whether it's faulty or not, who knows? But we're not going to put it in our zoning code until we get it verified. And we'll be working with the Air Force to take care of that. So that's one section of the zoning code that you didn't see before that's in there now. It's only one paragraph at this point. Second one is that I went ahead and am suggesting that we have a holding spot, and I've called it reserved, because we have one section in our current zoning that refers to signs, but it just basically says go see ordinance 603 or whatever it is as amended and take care of that. Well, that ordinance has problems because it's not consistent with some Supreme Court rulings that have come down and that has not been addressed yet. And it's fairly common for sign regulations to be a part of the zoning code. Most cities in fact do it that way. So I'm leaving that section open in case it's ever decided that that's where we ought to put zoning or maybe something else without messing with the numbering one more time. So those are the only changes that I'm suggesting that we make. My feeling is that we should go ahead and hold a public hearing in August and hopefully we can present this to the council at their August meeting. I think it's time. That's agreeable with you?
Totally.
Something else I wanted to bring up kind of in the context of that, and as you know, there's been a lot of interest and demand for many storage in Sherwood. Be nice. My sense is that we may have overreacted a little bit with what happened on Brockington because I can see there is demand and there is at least reasonable potential for many storage along 107. The problem, in fact, the city council at the last meeting had a six-to-one vote upheld our denial of C4 zoning. And the problem there wasn't what's being proposed, the problem was that's not the right place for C4. So the question in my mind then becomes, is there any circumstance under which it might be appropriate in C3? My sense is that what we are concerned about is controlling the impact on surrounding properties. And the way to do that really and truly is through conditional use. So my sense is that it might be appropriate to at least talk about and consider the possibility of C3 conditional for many storage. That way, I think we would have some control on it. I'd like to hear your reaction to that before we go any further.
I'm moving, my thoughts to keep it in C4 where it's tied right now.
C3?
Yeah, I am too. The reason is, uh, once you get it in C4, it's in C4. And so if, if you could put it in C3 but have some control over what it looks like and how big it is, that's a lot, would be better. would be better.
Well, I would suggest that we schedule a public hearing for the limited purpose of considering many storages as a conditional use in C three next month, and then decide what we want to do about that and whether we want to recommend it further to the council.
Do you need a motion or?
I'd take it.
I move that we schedule a exploratory or conditional, C three, many storages conditional in C three for next one.
Second?
Second.
Gillum?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Bruno?
I'll go on. I'm the exploratory.
And you'll still get to state your opinions here?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, can we go back on just one point I want to make sure I'm clear on?
Yeah.
And James Hellman here, Mr. Berkeley, has the PUD, it had gone to council already once, had it not?
It's had one reading.
Yes, it's had one reading.
One reading.
Okay. So what we'll do is, I'll need your revisions and then a clean version that we'll put on for our second reading into a motion to amend. That's what I couldn't...
That's, yes.
Very good.
We will provide the marked up copy for most.
I'm sorry?
We'll provide the marked up version as well.
Right.
So they can understand where it's from.
Yeah, they're going to want to see this, how we, how they compare. Okay, very good.
Yeah, they were real specific about wanting to see that. Finally, on the zoning districts map, we have gotten a final draft, almost final, from Metro Plan. It doesn't, at least at the last count, did not include the overlay districts, because that was new. But as soon as it does, it will go online on the city's webpage, and I wanted to show you a couple of examples of what the difference is. The one on the left is what the current zoning map looks like right now, and what you'll see is the zoning district lines just all over the place, going through properties. That's a fairly extreme example, but what they tried originally to do on a paper map was follow what they thought were going to be property lines, and in some cases, they didn't know where they were, so they missed. So what they've done is gone back and cleaned that up. The intent was not to change any zoning classifications, the intent was to clean it up and make sense of it. That's the first example of one where they simply cleaned it up. Second example is out along one oh seven, and this is the second issue that comes up. Our current zoning map shows floodplain zone, there is no such thing, and so that's gone. There is a floodplain there, but we're not going to predicate our zoning on the floodplain. It's based on an elevation, and that's a floating number, and we don't do that. The default is R one, and the truth of matter is, if it's in the floodplain, development opportunities are very limited to begin with. It really doesn't matter what the zoning is, so you go with the least intense zoning, and the least intense is low density residential. It would make any sense to make it industrial, commercial, or something like that, because that's not going to happen in the floodway. So, the draft map gets rid of that floodplain zone, and again, you can see where it's now following property lines more closely, and the other point I'll make is that the property lines are based on what's being generated by the assessor's office at the county level. To, as far as us and the state is concerned, that's official, so that's the lines we will be following. And the third one, again, there's no such thing as a floodplain. The Air Force was perfectly happy with the fact that it had been in effect zoned floodplain and industrial, because industrial is one of the uses that they don't frown upon, what they frown upon is housing. And you can see that the industrial zone up there kind of sort of followed where they thought that overlay district was, but not completely. And even though the updated map shows that to be residential and industrial, again, the residential is just the lowest density kind of use that could happen. The basic standard, I think, in, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Lucian, in zone one or two is like one or two units per acre. It's supposed to be low density.
Yeah, I think it's, it's no residential in one and one or two units per acre.
So here's...
To be truthful, I didn't even realize that anybody never put a number, but...
I think when you were originally looking at it, and when the original ordinance was passed by the council, was based on a two thousand and four study. It was an earlier study, and what we've got now is a two thousand and eleven version, and that has gotten more detailed. In fact, it lists a whole bunch of land uses and whether they are allowed, allowed conditionally, allowed with exception, or not allowed at all. And we, James and I have been talking about how we structure that. My sense is, but we're not going to get there quite yet, is that what we really got are two overlay districts, because they have separate criteria for what's permissible, and it gets complicated by the fact that there now are noise zones, and we're not supposed to put certain things in if the noise decibel level gets too high. And they're not on the map yet, and we'll have to figure out how to incorporate that too, but it only affects zone one.
But those could be rated as performance criteria, based upon a certain, the conditions in certain areas, but if it's this, then this is not allowed?
What I propose is that we put this on the webpage, and maybe even the staff can help us figure out a way to advertise that this is available. I want citizens to look at this map and let us know if they think there have been any mistakes made in drafting it. It's the last thing in the world we need is somebody coming up to us and complaining that we rezoned their property. I just want them to have an opportunity to look at it for a couple of months, and then after a couple of months, we'll hold a public hearing and then pass it on to the council. And I will make this observation, that if somebody says that's not what, I want my property zoned, that's not good enough. I want documentation and evidence of what the zoning was supposed to be so that we can get it right, not that we want to rezone anything. If that's agreeable. That's all I've got. Anything else? I'll take a motion.
I move we adjourn.
Gillum?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Bruno?
July tenth meeting of the Sherwood Board of Zoning Adjustment is now in order. Will you call the roll?
Gillum?
Aye.
Martin?
Here.
Aye.
Middleton?
Which one should I use? Here.
Bruno?
Here.
I don't have it yet.
You have the engine.
Do we have minutes on this one?
No minutes.
No.
We will dispense with the...
Minutes, minutes to next one.
Item number four. First, swear in the city engineer and there, city planner, you swear to tell the truth in any statement you're going to make before this board.
I do.
I do.
So on this, on this particular application, this is a situation where there was discovery made that there was an existing carport on that site that because of the changes to the accessory structure, language and code, it does not comply, and so because it's an existing structure, we're not holding up anybody from constructing it, and there may be a possibility of it becoming conforming as a result of changes, the staff recommendation on this item for now is to table it.
Was this recently built, or is this something that's been there a while?
Looks like maybe twenty years.
If it was in compliance when it was built, and we changed the rules, it's just grandfathered to stay.
The circumstances on this structure are that our electrical inspector went out to do an electrical inspection, and the panel to which, that he was inspecting was attached to this new structure for which a permit was never pulled.
Okay, okay, I understand that, understand that.
One thing about it is, there were no variant signs posted at the location saying, you know, that it was being considered for a variant.
Mr. Chairman, after our meeting this morning where we discussed some of these items and the disposition of this particular one in light of the fact that it may come into compliance with some future changes that are imminent, the applicant was advised that it was being canceled or not necessarily being heard or...
I just wanted to know the story, I'm in agreement that we need to table this.
Right, so just out of respect to the applicant, maybe just understand that there is a reason for why this is being tabled, or I guess that's a better word than canceled, that's a better term.
So the current regulations are out of compliance, and they're asking for forgiveness, but there's a chance that an amendment to these regulations would pull them back into compliance.
Correct.
Yes. Is there a motion?
Motion to table.
Second.
Call the roll.
Gillum?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Is there any new business? Old business?
Motion to adjourn.
Roll.
Gillum? Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Bruno?
We are adjourned.